This time of the call is meaningful to our people.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Pearson.
Present.
Rafferty.
Present.
Wolford.
Present.
Nichols. Ware.
Present.
Sanders.
Present.
Okay, we do have a call and thank you all for attendance tonight. Just want to mention this time of year, this is the holiday season guys and so comes Christmas and New Year. This is one of my favorite times of the year. I can say one thing, it seems as if the older I get, the faster that calendar seems to expire. So, I want to wish every person here a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year as well as to all of our residents here in Kahoke. Make sure that you take the time to go see a loved one or a friend or someone that you have not seen in a long time or just a phone call could be greatly appreciated because sometimes you never know the next time you'll see or hear from a person. So just keep that in mind as we go through this holiday season. The village also will be closed on Friday, December the 23rd as well as Monday, December the 26th. I want to put that information out there. Per union contract, since the holiday does fall on a Sunday at Christmas, the next day will be granted to those village employees. And then as a token of my appreciation for the hard work, the demand of even here, due on a yearly basis, I have granted them the day off as well on that Friday, December the 23rd. Now, the golf course will be open because I realize that our annual, our regular fish fry is our staple here in the village. And so for those of you who know individuals that have to have a fish fix, they can still have that fixed on that Friday as well. The only thing is that the golf course will only be open until 6 o'clock. So if anybody knows, if anyone likes to have the fish, they can still have that on Friday. Okay, at this time I'm going to go ahead and get into the post comments section here. I have Mr. Ted Chalk.
Thank you, Mayor. I was sorry I missed the last meeting because I was kind of excited over our presidential election. Nobody thought it was going to amount to much, but the effect on the country I think was good. I think we're headed in the right direction to change the things in this country and I hope the momentum keeps going. I could not understand and kind of keep trying to push people to get along. I wasn't here, but my son was in the hospital due to complications from the shooting, which in nine days will be a year and a half since he's been shot. Two weeks ago he told me he wished he had died that night because he's getting frustrated, doesn't think anybody cares about what happened to him. So I'm going to keep on that too. And the police are trying to help me, I know that. They were out at my house last Thursday and there was five of them because I detected some activity and they came out fairly fast. The only thing that bothers me is that's the third time in the last year and a half an officer told me that they were aware of activity on my property. And nobody, after they searched my property, nobody's ever come up to the door and warned me there might be an issue. I have a couple 84 years old across the street. We need to know when there's danger in the area so we can be aware. I've brought that issue up before, we need to be informed.
Thank you, Mr. Chalk. Next we have Ms. Moncoler, Jessica.
You know, there's been a lot of trouble getting FOIA's. Rich, I know you're overwhelmed with them. You know, this could all be solved if we just hit that website going and you can put that information straight out on there. You would not be bothered with a FOIA if it was all public information. And I want to remind you guys that it is Christmas. And even though we fight politically, I wouldn't want anything to happen to any of you. So moving forward, let's make some decisions for all the people of Kahoke instead of just a chosen few.
Okay, Ms. Moncoler. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and get started here. We're going to start with the minutes from the November the 9th of 2016. This time I need a motion and a second for approval.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by trustee Rafferty, second.
Second.
Second by trustee, who's that here?
Ware.
Roll call, please. Pearson.
Yes.
Rafferty.
Yes.
Wolford.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Minutes approved. Next we have payroll and council. Yes, trustee.
Okay, we got, we're back to this long meeting again. We had three come in on this pay invoices again. They're already not on the open invoice before they should be loaded on the paid out this time of year. Free Cutter just collected over $25,000. That's not counted, we haven't put Wolford's button in yet. And that's another thing, they're going to be cutting their ass and getting bills. I think when the year comes again, I think the art all should be paid before the end of the year. You know what I'm saying? But here's $25,000 not getting voted on. It's going on the paid invoices and it should be on the open invoices. And this is three months now, I've got no response out of it. And I mean, I don't know how you can do this without, it's going to be difficult, we have to. That's one of my questions.
Okay, all right, this time I need a motion and a second for approval.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Sanders.
Second.
Second by trustee Pearson, roll call. Pearson.
Yes.
Rafferty.
Yes.
Wolford.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Approved. Next we have no other finish business, new business, resolution number 16-1069. Just basically a resolution of the Board of Trustees with the Village of Kahoke, Saint Joseph County of Illinois, authorizing the mayor of the village. Just some pending litigation that we've had out there for quite a while. I'm going to turn this over to council to give a brief synopsis.
Thank you, Mayor. I've attached a memorandum to our insurance company attorney Brian Funk that kind of explains what this situation is. I'll give it to you in a nutshell. Basically, this is an insurance company case being handled by the insurance company. And basically there was a, this is before this term, but a, back in 2014, there was an auto accident with a police car and another automobile. The person with the other automobile sued the village of Kahoke and the police officer individually for an accident that happened. Now, the police car had his lights on and everything, so not only did the city, the village, but then sued against the other, from the other individual, but they also filed a counterclaim. Counterclaim was for the damage to the police car. Now, at this point, the insurance company attorney suggested that we settle the case by dismissing both, they will dismiss their suit, we dismiss the counterclaim. It doesn't count us paying any money at all and frankly, our police cars aren't even fixed by our insurance company. So we don't have to pay any money to the plaintiff nor do we have to fix our insurance car. So, he's right on that, we settled and I remind you.
Thank you, Councilor. Thank you. Hey, this time I need a motion and a second for the approval of the resolution number 16-1069.
Motion.
Motion by trustee, second by trustee Rafferty, roll call. Pearson.
Yes.
Rafferty.
Yes.
Wolford.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Moving on, we got ordinance number 16-1335, an ordinance regulating registered sex offenders. We want to put this in place, I've gotten it with the chief and he thought that this would be a great idea. Currently, the, our, the feet, being a registered sex offender, they can live 150 feet away. But we want to increase that to 1,500 feet, okay? Because, you know, the village, we have a lot of children around here and we just want to make things a little bit safer. So I thought that this was an excellent idea. At this time I need a motion and a second for the approval. Motion. Motion by trustee Sanders, second. Second by trustee Wolford. Roll call, please. Pearson.
Yes.
Rafferty.
Yes.
Wolford.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Approved. Next we have ordinance number 16-1336, ordinance adopting an employee's manual for the village of Kahoke. Basically, this employee, employee's manual, it is in conjunction with our insurance. And we want to be in compliance with our insurance here in the village. I believe the last time that this was even revised was back in 1988. That was years ago. And so, we all know, of course, things have changed since 1988. We want to be in compliance with sexual harassment and just up to 2016 and 2017 standards. So that's why we want to go ahead and bring this back here. There was nothing that was pretty much changed in it, we just want to come up to today's standards.
I just want to add that if there's anything conflicting with collective bargaining agreements, collective bargaining with the control. If there's anything in the manual conflicting with the union agreement, we need to give it control.
There is four things, I found on the, I read that whole book yesterday. It is good, but there's 210, 211, 218, 220. I don't agree with it a lot, I think it needs to be looked at before it's voted on, or our part and their part.
Trustee Nichols, two, the ones, the question, the numbers in question, what do they pretend to be?
Well, it's got it written down, it's, I'd have to go back to, I don't have to read it really, but that's the fore, I got it. I didn't bring the book with me. I had to load down my newspaper.
Okay.
It does contain the city and the workers, so it's.
And is the workers as far as the, the union contract?
That's just, it's basically just everything. So nobody over that catch point to it, you know, that's what I'm saying. It's just four there that I think should be looked at.
Okay, and, yeah.
210, 11, 18, and 20.
Okay, so I tell you what we'll do, trustee, we'll just take it until the attorney will look over and then we'll go back next month.
Okay.
Okay, yes, Mayor.
Unfortunately, the county was the damn on the way, he could pull out the one that he has a question to pick over that month. They do require you to pass it.
Okay, yes, for the insurance.
I would suggest that it was passive.
And remember, without those things that he has questions about, maybe look at those again as a point.
Okay.
Would you allow me to change it, would you pass it and we'll look at these and if the council.
No, I mean, I'm trying to exclude the ones that he's had concerns about.
Right, you see what she's saying, you're for insurance purposes here and we have to get this passed. But we can go back and look at these here and if we need some. Yes, Ms. Jackson.
Does that involve the sexual harassment policy?
No.
For those four, and bring those back.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to go ahead and approve this. We're going to take trustee Nichols' consideration on those other items, we're going to review them and if we need to make changes or modifications, then we'll bring that back and do that over time. Okay, so I'm asking for the approval of the manual at this time, specifically for the insurance purposes. Okay, I need a motion and a second, please.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Ware, second. By trustee Rafferty, roll call, please. Pearson.
Yes.
Rafferty.
Yes.
Wolford.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Ordinance approved. Next we have ordinance number 16-1337, ordinance provided, and by the way, ordinance number 16-1337, the following one, ordinance number 16-1338, and ordinance number 16-1339. They all coincide with each other because these ordinances relate to our, normally our annual, year-end budgeting with, as it relates to the appropriation budget, the tax levy, and the abatement real estate tax. This is something that has been occurring since the village has been a village. So these are all in relation to that. So ordinance number 16-1337, the approval ordinance provided for the annual appropriation budget for the village of Kahoke, Illinois for the fiscal year commencing on the first day of May and ending on the 30th day of April 2017. So I'm going to ask for the motion and a second.
That's the question I'm going to ask. Okay, this has got to do with your motor fuel tax too. And that's why we're giving your department answer. We got, we had 14 streets to be fixed two years ago, then we had 12. And now, through this year, we still have no streets fixed. So we got your motor fuel tax money there, so why isn't your new streets being paid? There was supposed to have been 12 streets paved in October, that was the last thing we had here, it was something in October, 12 streets. Nothing's been tested for paid, so what are we doing there?
Trustee, if you would like, we can get your copies of it with IDAT because a lot of it has been restructured. And so now IDAT is saying that we only have three streets as of right now. That would be like, I believe, White, Lynn, and, not Sparks, Sparks is not on anymore. Yeah, IDAT has changed a lot of the streets, so we're not, three. But I can tell you that the paperwork did come in from IDAT this week, Monday, with the guarantee. I just need to sign off on it that those streets will be done. But, yeah, and it relates to all those streets, they changed. So, and if you need.
They're coming for the budget probably, I hate.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to go for the 14 streets and 12 and 3. So I say.
I know, I know, I'm with you on that. Okay, this time I ask for a motion and a second for approval.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Sanders, second.
Second.
My trustee Wolford, roll call, please. Pearson.
Yes.
Rafferty.
Yes.
Wolford.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Ordinance approved. Next we have ordinance number 16-1338, ordinance providing the annual tax levy upon all real estate to the corporate members of the village of Kahoke. And subject to taxation for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May 2016 and ending on the 30th of April 2017. This time I need a motion and a second for approval.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by trustee Rafferty, second.
Second.
My trustee Wolford, roll call, please. Pearson.
Yes.
Rafferty.
Yes.
Wolford.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Ordinance approved. Next we have ordinance number 16-1339 to abate real estate tax. This time I need a motion and a second for approval.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Ware, second.
Second.
Second by trustee Sanders, roll call, please. Pearson.
Yes.
Wolford.
Yes.
Rafferty.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Ordinance approved. Last we have ordinance number 16-1340, an ordinance for regarding travel and lodging expenses. Not saying that anyone is leaving or going anywhere anytime, anytime soon. It just basically, if anyone had to go attend a conference, it gives us a level or amount of, for travel and expenses. And at this time, based off the, the current here is $500. But once again, not saying anybody's leaving to go to conferences at this time, so. We need, need a motion and a second at this time.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Sanders, second.
Motion.
Second by trustee Ware, roll call. Pearson.
Yes.
Rafferty.
Yes.
Wolford.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Ordinance approved, chief of department.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, I'll start with burglaries, they're down a little bit. The last time I recorded that most of the burglaries were occurring in St. Joe. We've made some arrests, so happy to say we really in the last month only have one in St. Joe. So that's, that's an improvement there. And also, of the burglaries we did have, there's at least five, four, five that we have pending charges on. So hopefully that'll reduce, reduce them more. But again, most of them are occurring at daytime and it's Christmas time, people know you got Christmas presents under the tree. I know at least one, they got all the Christmas presents and it's brand new stuff. So watch, you know, during the day, watch your neighbor's stuff. It's better to have an alarm or a big dog, usually if you have an alarm or a big dog, you don't get bothered. So, vehicle burglaries, there was five of them. Four of them were unlocked vehicles, so, one was a delivery truck at Schnucks. He left it unlocked while he went in to make a delivery and they got him. But the other, there's three of, out of the four were just unlocked vehicles that I guess people found. There was one burglary, reference to stolen vehicles, we really didn't have no stolen vehicles, but there was one burglary out at A and S Auto, out on Camp Jackson where a Jeep Liberty was taken and there's charges pending on that, we got the Jeep Liberty back. Other than that, there's been no, no, no stolen, no more stolen cars. As far as robberies go, we've had four of them. Three of them related to a small group on Facebook, meeting people to buy stuff and then robbing them. And we're getting, or two people were charged, two males were charged on that, Bradley and 26 and Erst, due to 23. So we cleared up all three of them and that stopped. But they were, they were on a roll for a couple, two or three days. And then there was another one recently on December 4th on Mildred. It was a street robbery between two people and taking a wallet and there was a Marlin Bing M18 and two juveniles charged in that. So we cleared up all the robberies that occurred over the last month. And there was really no shootings, yes.
I just want to ask you a question.
Sure.
What Facebook page is that?
I'm not sure, does, what Facebook page does that relate to, is it the for sale?
I think they were just messing each other more than that. It was the, there's a page that you can actually type on Facebook that either was it, it's like Yarsil page for different communities. I'm sure that's the one I'm talking about.
I do, but I want to know which page it was coming from.
Yeah, I believe it was the Yarsil page for Kahoke.
Kahoke, too, huh?
And you know, you got to, you got to remember, it happens on Craigslist too. You know what I'm saying? So anytime you're meeting somebody, they were meeting in neighborhoods, you know, which is not a good idea, you know? And so.
Private, private, public place.
Right.
Private, private, public place. Police Department's over here.
Yeah. And then there was one shooting, only one significant shooting and that was, and I'm sure you've all heard about that at Walmart. We had a, we got called to Walmart by an off-duty Washington Park policeman that there was somebody they wanted, which he was, he had over $100,000 in warrants. He was a bad dude. He came out of Walmart, two of our officers confronted him. They weren't able to get, get him in custody, chased him around the lot and he got in, got in his car. And he was able, he was speeding away and he went right towards the off-duty Washington Park police officer. He fired at least three times into the car, he was hit at least once and he died at the hospital. He ended up hitting one of our police cars and then hit the building, Walmart, and hit another person out on the highway and then he only made about a mile down the road. He took him to the hospital and he died. And he, that's unfortunate and state police is doing a full investigation on that, yeah. And it was a Hertz rental car, so hopefully, hopefully we're getting our squad car paid for, so. That's about it.
Okay, thanks, last one.
I got a couple questions.
Sure.
The first thing is our code enforcement, we got two officers. I fear from what's, they're out there on the streets that many. They need to be fitted for vests. If they need fitted vests, they don't need to do vests, they got, it doesn't matter. Then why don't we have armed code enforcement officers anymore? We've always had armed code enforcement officers.
Well, before, that fell under the deputy marshal program. And I, I don't know if you noticed or not, we're not utilizing our deputy marshal program anymore because the laws have changed so much, the liability has changed so much. Unless somebody's properly trained, you open yourself up for so much liability. The deputy marshals were only required to do the 40R mandatory, which allowed them to carry a gun and, you know, be certified in a gun, so that's the only thing they ever learned. I mean, back in the day, we used to group up, do handcuff training, do all kinds of training. But they really need to be certified and that, and that falls under, with the code enforcement officers too. Now, you know, we can entertain later on them going through the part-time academy and getting certified, but, you know, that's a lengthy, that's a lengthy process too.
Well, why can't we do that through FOP? That would give us two more officers, I'm just forgetting they do do that.
FOP is, is a police union, it has nothing to do with code enforcement.
They won't accept them in FOP?
No, I doubt it and not to my knowledge, I'd have to look at the rules on that, but I'm going to say no, probably not. Because, you know, they're just not, they're just not certified police officers. You have to be, you have to be a certified police officers with the Illinois Training Board, you know, to be, to act as a policeman. And if you're going to carry a firearm and people are going to think you're a policeman or whatever, you have to be certified as a policeman to, to have police powers, to, you know, they're going to have a firearm, they're going to have to make arrests too, you know? And you have to be certified, you have to, you have to be trained, you have to be taught.
And why would center and other ones go down that way? We need, we guys to avoid that.
The laws, the laws were a little looser back then. Like I said, we utilized them back then. We, basically, we kind of flew by the seat of our pants, but, you know, I mean, it worked, it helped out a lot. I agree with you, it did help out a lot. And a lot of times those code enforcement officers were a good help. But I couldn't see why we couldn't give them bulletproof vests or something like that to protect them more, you know?
They need something, you have to have their okay and they.
I agree with you.
These guys are causing problems, they can fix them, you know?
I, I agree with you.
That's the way I look at it.
Yeah.
But I do have another one and we did have some depth of a village employee and I don't remember where that's at. Is it an under investigation of the city credit cards?
Yeah, it's under investigation.
So, it is being handled?
It's being handled.
All right. That's all I got, I'm done.
All right, thanks, somebody.
Go ahead.
How many officers do we have on, in the village at night? I mean, how many cars, how many officers?
It varies, it could be as many as five or six, it could be as low as three. But it's almost never lower than three.
All right. No, we need some more patrolmen on Peril Street over there. On the county side, that truck driver over there had a battery charger stolen and a two-wheeler. He called, you know, St. Clark County, come out. The cameras I have on my building showed the guy, but they didn't, you know, act like they could do it. They would run, run the stuff off armed and show where the guy turned around and was taken off. And they went down the county line and the person that was involved in that is on drugs and that stuff.
And probably been stealing in our town too.
I'm saying that they, I'm just saying, the battery charger probably didn't go off armed or nothing.
No.
Or the two-wheeler, but still, we need to have some more officers over there because of the couple drug things that are going on on Peril Street.
Good.
Thank you. Number four from the attorney, the executive session we don't need tonight. But you do have two business licenses. The first one is Ox, Warren Grill, 103 Water Street, Kahoke, Illinois 62206. Mr. Fisher, Randy Fisher, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Mr. Fisher, can you give us an update on your business? Where, what, what, are we expecting some good food?
We're going to open up Monday morning.
Okay, good.
We're going to have a swap opening this weekend, Brandon's family, the company. And we'll open for breakfast Monday morning, 6 o'clock.
Okay, all right, well, listen.
And house dinner and breakfast. And we were also today licensed with state of the art organic, so we'll have those a little bit.
Hey, hey, well, I tell you, I'm ready to get the pancakes and the eggs, the bacon and all of that. So let's go ahead and get this approved. I need a motion and a second for approval.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Rafferty, second by Ware, roll call, please. Pearson.
Yes.
Rafferty.
Yes.
Wolford.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
All right, approved, congratulations, Mr. Fisher. Next we also. Next we also have one other business, American Free of Illinois here. Okay, will be located at 1696 Camp Jackson Road, Kahoke, Illinois. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. John Ross.
Nice to meet all of your folks. We're kind of excited about getting into Kahoke. We already have a store located at Page Avenue in St. Louis and in St. Peters. I started with the company six years ago, we had 52 stores, we've got 137 nationwide now in 23 states. And I'm more excited about bringing jobs, you know, and creating relationships to come into the community and hope you'll come there and take a look at it and see what we have, our prices are good. We have everything from discount furniture all the way to some higher-end furniture. We're going to be located in the Camp Jackson Shopping Center, it's the end cap, we're combining two suites. And we're scheduling to open December 30th, that's our prayer and hope. we're, we're scheduling to open December thirtieth. That's our prayer and hope. And so please come and see what we have. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And to anyone who's still kind of wondering where it is, years ago where the old highlight Myers front of the store, he'll be right there on that, in that location. Okay, we need a motion and a second for approval, please.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Sanders, second by trustee Wolford, roll call, please. Pearson.
Yes.
Wolford.
Yes.
Bradford.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
All right, approved.
I have one more question for the chief. Is there a rest made on that?
On what?
On the credit card debt.
No, not at this time.
Why?
It's under investigation.
I, I mean.
You didn't arrest him?
I mean, you don't arrest somebody when you do that, or?
Any investigation takes, goes through steps. Okay, any investigation, all right?
Yeah, I understand. But what I'm not understanding is, why wasn't he arrested at the time he died? I mean, that's what I'm asking.
Any, like I said, any investigation goes through steps, Jerry. It's under investigation. Give it time. Just give it time. Okay?
I'm giving it time, but I want an answer for what I'm trying to ask. If you arrested me for something, I mean, if you picked me, I'd be arrested right then, taken to jail, right?
Yep. If you know what happened at that time, yes.
So, okay. So you're saying it didn't, they had to review before they died?
Yeah.